For a few minutes.
It was like.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the November twelfth, twenty twenty meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council.
I'll call in a quarter and ask that we stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would ask that we take a brief moment of silence, especially considering it was Veterans Day, thinking about everyone. Thank you. In accordance with mass general law, this meeting is being recorded by LCAT. And if there's anyone in the audience recording, if you could identify yourself. Seeing none. Public comments. Cheney, I don't believe we have anyone signed up.
No.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Seeing none. Council comments. Is there any councillor that would like to make a comment? None. Town manager report. Hi, Tom.
Hi, good evening. Reason right through. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, so we're gonna start uh by thanking our town clerk, uh Jeannie Quaglietti, uh and her staff and all the election workers uh for another uh perfect, perfectly run election. Um, and how many this year? Five? Uh, over, well, the November vote and then uh so five in twelve months, so uh. Obviously, we show up and we do our thing and we go home and it seems like a well-oiled machine, but it is. However, a lot of work goes on behind the scenes to make that look so easy. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jackie, I see. Thank you. Um, really, the whole staff, all the election workers, um, just really, uh, kudos across the board. Thank you so much. And then, uh, by the time we went to press, we didn't have some uh some information or or some comment to write down, but uh, it was Veterans Day uh yesterday. Um, the, thank the Council on Aging. Uh, they had a nice dinner here for veterans uh Friday night. Raised some money for the Veterans Memorial. Um, and then obviously, um, post two ninety-three, uh, American Legion had their ceremony at Town Hall, was very well attended. A lot of uh councillors were there as well. Uh, Representative Ash, a representative from Jake Olivera's office. So, uh, it was been stated many times over the weekend, but um it's it's very important that we remember the 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 sacrifice and the freedoms that we have, all because of our 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 veterans and um and their families. So, uh, thank you once again to our servicemen and women. Uh, we've got the uh, the last uh five reports here for the weeks beginning September thirtieth through November first uh for the new high school. Uh, a lot has happened in five weeks. It's very exciting. Uh, there's major progress over there. From administrative side, the uh school building committee sent the ninety percent design submission to MSBA at our last meeting. Um, and tentatively, we have a groundbreaking ceremony scheduled Friday, November twenty-second at nine. Uh, they're still working out some of those details with MSBA, so uh I'll update that uh everyone when I can. We completed the uh order of taking on uh three eighty-two North Main Street Friday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-four. So, uh, I I attached the order. Obviously, you all signed after the meeting on the eighth. Um, we were working through all the logistics and um scheduling and uh haven't dove too deep into. We obviously have a lot of opportunity here and uh a lot of options for for how to utilize our space as the leases come off the rent roll. Um, so, uh, I I think uh the sentiment was and hasn't changed that uh this is a sort of a historic thing for our town. Um, and so again, I thank you all for for supporting it. Uh, I think uh it's gonna be a wonderful asset for for the town for for many generations to come. Shortly after I emailed you on the eleventh uh about the good news about three eighty-two North Main Street, uh, we received notification from uh, the Office of Economic Development that our one-stop uh grant was approved in the amount of one point nine seven five million dollars uh to upgrade the Chestnut Street Water Pump Station. Um, uh, Felix, our water and Felix Lashawn, our water and sewer administrator and uh Deputy Town Manager Rebecca Lisi, uh, took a trip out to Worcester to accept the, did you guys get a big check? Did you, did they give you the big one? Uh, the big check. Um, there was a ceremony uh held by Governor Healy and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll. Um, so thanks to everybody who put that uh application together. Obviously, um, grants are great. They're a lot of work and they're even nicer when we get them. Um, so thank you, everybody at DPW. Um, and anybody that had a hand in in helping to fill that out. Um, we also received a twenty-one thousand dollar grant, thereabouts, and change from the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division. Um, we had a qualifying a hundred and sixty thousand dollar allotment that uh required a project be submitted that was that met all the qualifications in order to get that amount of money, which we did. Rebecca um worked with DPW to get that application in. And we received the additional twenty-one thousand to finish the project at the DPW Service Building. Weatherizing and um some HVAC kind of things. It's probably uh one of our least efficient buildings, obviously. Uh, one of our older buildings, but um, so that's an exciting project. And again, thanks to Rebecca and Public Works for for all the work to 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 get that project uh essentially paid for with with grant money, so. Thursday evening here at the COA, uh, we welcomed uh Chuck Marone, uh, founder of Strong Towns to give a presentation and promote his book, Escaping the Housing Trap: The Strong Towns' Response to the Housing Crisis. Um, the event was very well attended. We had plenty of food for everyone. I'm, I think people showed up for the presentation and not necessarily the food. But it's always nice to have food. Um, uh, a lot of our local officials were there. Um, Wilbraham had representatives, West Springfield, and we had visitors from as far north as Greenfield and as far east as Worcester. I realize I wrote west there. We'll have to change that. Uh, so the videos on LCAT, um, well, Jamie's done an excellent job. Almost anything you could wanna know that's happened uh is on LCAT. Uh, what'd you say, including the the fire department uh skills competition at the open house or whatever? Um, so that video is also on LCAT. Um, it's very, very informative. If if you weren't there, I I recommend you you kinda give it a look in terms of the history of housing from, say, the Great Depression until now. Uh, and and some, there were some interesting, I I took away a a handful of things that I really didn't, I thought I knew, and I I think they were either clarified or sort of disproven. Um, it's it's quite the uh, it's quite the uh, it was quite the presentation, so. Um, thanks, Rebecca, for setting that up uh and persuading Chuck to come and speak to us. We appreciate that. I attended a groundbreaking ceremony at the new West Parish Water Treatment Plant in Westfield, um, middle of October. Um, the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, which is our water service provider, um, is upgrading their facility uh to serve Springfield and the surrounding communities. Uh, we heard remarks from Senator Ed Markey, Congressman Neal, Mayor Sarno, uh EPA, Deputy Regional Administrator Karen McGuire, and Mastie EP Commissioner Bonnie Hypal. Um, so this this facility um is state-of-the-art and sort of will ensure that we have clean drinking water for for many generations to come. We have a new officer in the Police Department, Sabrina Gagne. Uh, Chief Williams, uh, our HR Director, Adra Staples, and I attended her graduation ceremony, uh, October seventeenth. Uh, Sabrina graduated with distinction and won the Staff Instructors Award uh in recognition of her outstanding leadership. Um, congrats to Sabrina and welcome aboard. We also have a newly appointed firefighter EMT, Craig Presnell. Greg graduated from Mass uh Firefighting Academy's Career Recruit Firefighter Training Program in October. Uh, Craig also re-received accommodation as he was the recipient of the prestigious Richard N. Bangs Award for Outstanding Performance in Academics and Skills. Um, so congrats to Craig uh and and welcome as well. The town uh recently joined forces with Tom Pine Communications um to audit our communication techniques. Um, I think I've been beating the drum since I've been sitting here and probably before that. Um, I I think one of our biggest complaints is always communication and how we get our information to the community. Um, so Tom is sort of auditing our processes and systems to see how we can uh get our message out to the community uh even better, uh or a little better, or however you wanna say it, uh better, I guess, would be the operative word. Um, we're just trying to uh reach more people more often um and let them know what we're doing. So Tom's gathering information from our department heads, um, employees and the public. Um, there is a um survey link on the town's website right now, also our Facebook page, and we're trying to set up some areas where where we'll have some posters and stuff. There's a QR code and a link. Um, and we really, uh, again, like everything else, want as much community impact or uh input as we um can get so that this finished product serves the most people. So, uh, upcoming events, we have uh the Meat Detectives here Friday, November fifteenth, six to eight. Um, I had pizza. I heard there's pizza. Um, and uh, so that's a joint event with Long Meadow. Um, just kinda talking about uh sort of preventative things, crimes of opportunity, and what you can do to sorta sorta protect yourself from that sort of thing. Um, and then again, like I said, the groundbreaking at ELHS sort of still to to be determined, but it seems like it will be uh Friday, November twenty-second at nine at the high school. Um, and uh, I'm free to answer any questions, uh, but that's all I got for tonight. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Through the chair. Um, so first off, the one-stop grant is absolutely amazing at one point nine million. Um, I know we were hopeful to get it, um, but realistically, we didn't expect to. At least I didn't expect to. Yeah, I think that's fantastic. And much needed. Um, as we're all aware, we um tend to, on a quarterly basis, get uh notices from our water department, um, which goes right into the West Parish facility.
Yep.
So from what I understand, the complete overhaul up there is to try and benefit all the towns so that um maybe we won't be getting those in the future.
That is correct.
Um, which brings me to my last thing that I've heard recently. Um, I heard that the state is requiring us to test the water as it comes into the pump station before we do our treatment.
Correct.
So in essence, we're sending out these notices to people that we have these contaminations and all. Um, but I haven't ever seen in there that, hey, the water's already been treated and the chances are it's already been taken care of.
Yeah, so the law is pretty clear that uh regardless of the um circumstances, if the numbers are the numbers, it has to be reported. That's it.
So when it comes in, the numbers are higher, but we do treat for it.
Correct. And, right. And so the the, I don't wanna get into the whole science of the whole thing, of course, but um, that is the case. We've asked numerous times to move that testing station, okay, right on the downstream side of the treatment plant uh to no avail. Um, this is how it is.
Why I'm bringing it up. I'm hoping that the public would realize, um, or that some people actually hear this conversation and understand that um the test happens as the water comes in, then we treat it, then the water goes out.
Right.
So there's a high probability that those contaminants are a lot lower going to the household than what the numbers are showing.
Right.
Because we are working on it and we are treating the water, so.
Right. And we'll continue to do so. Um, and yes, this, hopefully, this uh this project, which is, like I said, state-of-the-art, multi-multi-million-dollar project uh to filter that water and and um, get it to the communities without such a high volatility of HAA fives and, you know, I don't, I don't know all the acronyms offhand, but.
Neither do I. That's why I didn't use it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, like I said, I I was surprised. Um, I thought those numbers were actually what was going into our residence house.
Yeah, no, yeah, there's.
Come to find out, it it's not.
It's a, it's an average, and then it's a running average, so if if.
The average of the water that we're receiving.
But if you fail one quarter, you can have three-quarters good in a row. You still have to report because you've, the aggregate is still failed.
I would guess if we did it downstream after we've treated, uh, the numbers would probably be uh quite a bit different.
Without any empirical data, I would say that you're probably correct. Um, and and I guess I should say to your first point, uh, a lot of credit, I think, goes to the council. We we put up a considerable uh amount of money to design that pump station in order to get the grant. So, thank you uh for for that, sort of that foresight to say, this is worth the investment and it paid off, so.
As a follow-up, um, the one point nine million is that, are those funds sufficient to do the whole, the entire?
We had uh laid out the difference in capital. It's already appropriated.
Great. Any other questions for Tom?
All right.
Thank you.
Have communications corresponded to the question. First one is the November fifth, twenty twenty-four state election update from our town folks.
Hey, um, I'll read the numbers first. So there was seventy-one percent turnout um for voters, which I was surprised at. Twenty twenty, we had eighty percent, and twenty twenty was before even the by-mail ballots. And that was like a trend throughout the state that most towns and cities were five to ten percent lower than twenty twenty. So, um, Morrison-Walds got four thousand eight hundred and one votes. Trump advanced four thousand seven hundred and fifty-three votes, so that was close. Um, the senator race, Warren got four thousand five hundred seventy-nine and Deaton got five thousand eighteen. So this was close races and all the other results are on the website if you wanna look at them. We had twelve days of early voting, uh, two weeks excluding Sunday, so Monday through Saturday on two weeks. And the total there was two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven voters, like sixteen percent of the population voted early in person. It was steady.
Yeah.
Steady. Every day. The heaviest day was the last day, which was on a Friday, where three hundred votes came in. So, um, that was pretty good. Number of vote-by-mail ballots requested was over six thousand. Sixty-two hundred people requested vote-by-mail ballots, and everyone had to be recorded, right, Jackie? And everyone had to be labeled and mailed twice, right, Jackie? So of those sixty-two hundred sent out, we got back two thousand nine hundred, which is the trend. We get back half of what is requested. Um, so the vote-by-mail ballots, twenty-nine hundred, plus the number of early in-person, twenty-seven hundred, so about fifty-seven hundred were early ballots of all those votes. So fifty-seven hundred early ballots plus a little over four thousand Election Day. So again, the trend continues. We get more early ballots and people walking through the door, even though it was a steady, steady day. It went pretty well. We had a few people come in that tried to vote again. Um, I dealt with one of them. Came in and he said, you know, one of the check-in people got me, and so it was early in the day and and I had him check in and the poll pad said early ballot received, which means, I said, well, he slums like you, requested an early ballot, yes. And it looks as though we've recorded as accepted. Well, yes. I said, well, you can't vote again. Well, can I see my ballot? And there was five thousand seven hundred ballots sitting on a a team I had put together. Jackie and Cindy um ran this team all day that opened and and checked in ballots, but luckily hours and days and weeks have been spent sorting those ballots every day. So we bring him out of the vault every day. We we get in hundreds by the mail and we sorted them by precinct, by street, alphabetically. So I was able to go in there and find his ballot and I answered some questions for him and he was happy, but we had a few people doing that. Even in early in-person voting, they'd come in and vote, and then the next week they'd come back. And we tell them, you can't vote, just to, I guess they're just testing the system, but the voting day went pretty good. Um, busy, busy. So we're still not done. The election was the fifth. We had until the eighth, which was that Friday, to accept vote-by-mail ballots, as long as they were postmarked by the fifth. We did get Dropbox ballots, but we had to record everyone, reject them because they received too late, and then send each voter a letter that was rejected, and that's why. We have until the fifteenth, which is a Friday by five, to count the overseas ballots, which has to be done in an open border registrars meeting. So the following Monday, I have a meeting scheduled at nine to count those ballots. There's maybe what, fifteen, twenty? Twenty-five. So we'll count those, then we have till the twentieth to certify, and then we'll be done. So it's a long process. It started, this process started while we were still in the September, throws the September election, so we'll have a break. Generally, the rule is every um even year, when you just have the local elections. Odd. The numbers. Yeah. So again, I say every time, I'm just so grateful for the support of the council, town manager, my staff, election workers. We really work well together. You know, it's a long day. We left the office at midnight. The uh, we're tallying till eleven o'clock at the at the gym because all those all those early ballots had to be checked in and fed in the machines that day. So when the polls closed at eight, we were still in there till nine, processing the ballots. Yep. But we knew it'd be a long night, so um, and it's over now. So thank you for your support, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also just echo Tom's sentiment from earlier that thank you to you and Jackie and of course, the entire staff, because.
You're welcome.
Goes into all of that. Great. Next, uh, we have the update on the Town Council's Planning Matters Subcommittee.
Thank you, Connor. Um, just for the record, since we have some people in the audience and are viewing public, um, the Planning Matters Subcommittee is a subset of the Town Council. And our responsibility is to review and advise the council any planning board material that comes before the council for future action. So that's our goal, whether it be zoning bylaws, it's usually zoning bylaws. We will review them, um, advise the council based on what we work we did and see what the council does with it. Um, the Planning Matters Subcommittee met last Thursday, November the seventh. Um, the purpose of that meeting was to review a bylaw that's before us. It's, the title of the bylaw is Commercial Kenneling. And the the proposal suggests that this use be permitted only in the industrial zone. Um, there was discussion back and forth. There is a recommendation that we're gonna make, and you have to wait until December tenth before we give it. Because the second reading of the bylaw proposal will be at our next meeting on December tenth. I'm excited with our new committee. I am happy to be working with Diane Bishop, Assessing Director, Ryan Quimby, Informational Technology Director, Anna Jones, Town Council Vice President, I almost called you president. And Ken Hancock, who's a member at large. So, um, I think it'll be a good year, whatever we have to tackle. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. And the next one was the Citizens Legislative Seminar Update. So back at the end of October, the last week, there was a two-day seminar that I was invited to by our State Senator Jake Olivera. Uh, and that's essentially where, I think, our class size this year was forty-four people, so forty-four people from across the Commonwealth went to the State House for two days to learn a bit behind the scenes of how the legislative process works as a whole, but also how the Senate does does their work to kind of demystify the the process and see some of the inner workings, and of course, see the state building and all the different rooms and aspects of that. So it was pretty informative and similar to what Tom mentioned about one of the other topics. You know, you think you know a lot of things, but then there are things that are different than you expected them to be than how the government operates as well. So that was it there. I do have two other uh communication additions. One is just a repeat from our last meeting, so the Stuff in the Pantry five K uh letter that we got that is happening on Thanksgiving, Thursday, November twenty-eighth, uh, eight AM. And then I also met today with uh Tom Pine for the communications audit, so he had previously, I think he's still finishing it up, but met with the town department heads, but to represent the council, I met with him today to go through the survey and provide any feedback, so I'm sure we'll hear more about that as the process continues.
Thank you.
All right, public hearings. It is now six twenty-six, so we can start our hearing on the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for ground-mounted photovoltaic installations for a second. So this one is a public hearing for a required second reading for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for ground-mounted photovoltaic installations. The council members from left to right are Jim Layden, uh, Marilyn Richards, Kathy Hill, myself, Connor O'Shea, Anna Jones, Ralph Page, and John Torscha. I will ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on November twelfth, twenty twenty-four at six fifteen PM in the media room of the Council on Aging, located at three twenty-eight North Main Street, with the purpose of addressing proposed amendments to the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw article ten, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations. These amendments would add the definition of a quote parking canopy end quote installation and add text to the definition of roof-mounted installations. Add the exemption of small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations from the site plan review requirement and remove medium and large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations from the area dimensional and density requirements. The public hearing may also be attended via Zoom webinar for the council, Jeanne R. Quaglietti, Town Clerk of the Council.
Thank you, Cheney. At this time, we can read the bylaw into the record for the second time. So to start, uh, we received a memo from uh Rob Wachilla, the Director of Planning, from on October eighteenth uh regarding the recommendation of bylaw amendment. So at the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board, the board reviewed the proposed bylaw amendments to the Town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw article ten, ground-mounted photovoltaic installations. The board voted unanimously to recommend that the Town Council review and adopt the amendments as text in blue indicates language to be included, while red, strike-through indicates language to be deleted. The advertised public hearing and the board's discussion on this vote is duly noted in the minutes and the recording of their October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting. It is set a public hearing before the appropriate committees of the Town Council be scheduled on this matter. Respectfully submitted, Robert Wachilla, Director of Planning.
So through the chair.
Sure.
Um, this was a bylaw that originally came forward, um, very limited. And when we did the first reading on it, um, we were asked to uh send it back to the planning board because there was additional items and all that wanted to be added into this, which um have been added into it, which is great. Um, but typically, after the first reading, we would have sent it to the Planning Matters Subcommittee. You, so I would ask that we continue the public hearing at this time so that we can send it to the Planning Matters Subcommittee and then do a reading at our next meeting um after the Planning Matters Subcommittee's reviewed it.
I'm in agreement with continuing it so that it can be reviewed by the Planning Matters Subcommittee, but I think we still have to read it as the second reading tonight, do we not?
No, actually, typically, after the first reading is when the Planning Matters Subcommittee reviews it, so that way they can make any additional recommendations on changes.
A lot of this information is new.
Yeah, right. But we did.
You look directly under four fifty. You look directly under four fifty dash ten point two in it. It highlighted that the removal of this section is subject of another zoning public hearing before the Town Council, which it isn't because we've combined public hearings together to just this one. Because they added multiple things to this. I mean, I have no problems with it being read. But my thought would be it would have to be read again at the next one.
I may, oh, I'm sorry. A lot of the information hasn't been read. So how can you call it a second reading? Because it was the additional information that came after the first reading, which had minimal changes. And then we heard there were more were coming, so we waited appropriately. However, um, it's, you know, this, I, I look at half the stuff and it's not a second reading, it's a first. So however you want to handle it, but.
Yeah, I mean, the way I see it, it, it's still a continuation of the same initial process on this bylaw and the original proposal, although there's different changes that have happened since. So I see that it's still a second reading and we don't necessarily have to read it again at the next one. If we're doing the second reading tonight, I'll just continue.
If I may, this, the first reading and the second reading was for the benefit of the people. That's what the charter carved out, that in the event these folks were not here and then missed the first or the second reading, however, then they didn't have a chance to weigh in on the potential changes. It doesn't hurt to read anything twice, but to say this is the second reading, I think, is inaccurate for what we're dealing with, unless you want to deal with the few pieces that we dealt with previously. But this should be a first.
I get, I'm just not to muddy the water too much, but assumedly, there could be a whole myriad of other comments from Planning Matters, which would sort of create a third reading at the next, right? If, if, if you revise this again, uh, to the point where there's a lot of information that's not here now, that, then all of a sudden, you have a whole other document, which, um, you know, I don't know. I, I'm not sure how it's always been done, but, um, again, the point being, it doesn't hurt to read it. However, you probably would have to read it again if it changed a bunch. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, I, I thought we had done this before where the first reading, as long as the topic didn't change, even if the second reading was wildly different than the first reading, it was still the second reading. I thought that's how we had done it in the past. But again, that's sort of your prerogative or how you see or how you interpret what these changes are.
I agree with that.
Either way, it's a long, it's a lot of, it's a lot of, I'd prefer to do it once.
Oh, Rebecca, sure.
Uh, I just want to add, I do believe it's a separate orders. So one was strictly for the planning board notification of, uh, small-scale structural hookups to be considered that went through the planning board process, and then that came back to council. I believe that was tabled so that you could take up this other item about the photovoltaic installations at the same time. So you may be doing a second reading on one, but a first reading on the other.
So thank you, Rebecca.
It's a hybrid. It's a one point five.
Rob?
Also want to point out that the, um, utility notification, the way that's formatted being removed, is how that amendment was proposed as well.
Could he?
Could you stop, we can't hear you.
Tabled, we can't.
Sure. Yeah, Rob, come on.
Side in the back.
So, uh, nice to meet you all. Rob Wachilla, Director of Planning. So the way that the utility notification part is formatted here is how it's going to be presented in the bylaw, just gone. So there's not really any discrepancies between those two public hearings, per se, and it wouldn't do any harm to combine both because they pertain to the same section. So.
So through the chair.
Chair.
I think we didn't do a public hearing on the utility one. I believe the Planning Board did, but it came to us for a first reading.
Yep.
And this is the first public hearing we've held on this. So my thought is this one document encompasses everything.
Yeah, it does. And also the changes in this document are what's going to go into the bylaw. So even if the section here is crossed off anyways, that's still going to go into the bylaw during this public hearing process.
So even though we've opened a public hearing, um, it would be my suggestion you do this as a first reading. Read this, send it to Planning Matters Subcommittee when it comes back, uh, in December. Read it again, and that way there, everything's covered.
Yeah. That works for me.
I suggest Anna does the reading.
They're always. All right, here goes.
I was joking. If you want to do it, go read.
Fine, I suggest you can do it. Okay, so we are going to read this.
Correct? Just red, I think.
And read the, the, as well, or just?
We don't have to read the, the blue and the red.
Yeah.
But we don't have to read the entire thing, uh, Jeanne.
I would suggest if there's a section with no changes, you would say no changes in this section, then go on to the, how changes in the next section. Because the last three pages, there's no changes.
Who's counting?
So I want to point out that there's a lot of sections where I added the word and parking canopy.
I noticed that.
So you could probably just keep using that as a, as a reference if you wanted to, just to save you time, so.
Okay, so ground-mounted photovoltaic installations. We have subsection four fifty, ten, um, dash ten point one, purpose, no changes. Uh, section A, uh, section B, no changes. Then we have subsection four fifty dash ten point two, uh, section A, no changes. Section B, we are adding and parking canopy. Section C is, I'm sorry, oh, sorry. Look at me. Okay, so this is a whole new section. So roof-mounted solar photovoltaic installations are exempt from the site plan review requirement. Such installations shall be designated in a manner as to not create significant reflection and/or glare to the street and public right-of-way. Section D, small-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations are exempt from the site plan review requirement. That's the new section, um, and must adhere to the following design and operation standards. Okay, so then we are getting rid of all of section, uh, number one of section D. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, section two, no changes. I'm sorry, number two of section D, no changes. Number three of section D, no changes. Now we are at subsection four fifty dash ten point one, uh, number four, no changes. Uh, number five, accessory use, if installed, we are getting rid of in a residential district, and we're adding on the same parcel as an existing residential dwelling. Is that enough, twenty-two points? No, that's fine, right? Okay. All right, subsection four fifty, ten dash three definitions. Um, we are adding parking canopy. Hold on.
Yep. No, you're right.
No, I just got to get down here. I don't have a printed copy. No, it's okay. Uh, parking canopy, uh, solar photovoltaic insulation is a solar photovoltaic insulation that is mounted to a parking canopy structure, which is more than seven, I'm sorry, nine hundred seventy-two square feet in footprint and covering at least six parking spaces. Okay. Okay, we are now down to roof-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. I think I need to name all the definitions that, okay. Okay, so roof-mounted solar photovoltaic installation. Oh boy. Maybe I need that, because I lost it. It's gone. Okay, so a solar photovoltaic system that is structurally mounted to the roof. We are adding solid roof and not an on material. Okay, we're getting rid of structure, and then we're adding building, which includes residential dwellings, commercial buildings, and garages. Roof-mounted solar photovoltaic installations do not include solar voltaic installations mounted to parking canopies or similar structure, uh, structures. Okay, we are down to zoning enforcement authority. The building commissioner, and we are adding, or his designee, is charged with enforcing all zoning bylaws of East Langmeadow. Okay, subsection four fifty, ten point four, no change. Subsection ten, uh, four fifty, ten point five, compliance with laws, bylaws, and regulations. We are adding and parking canopy. I think we're adding that to the next one, two, three, four.
Nice.
Sections. Uh, that's good, right?
Yeah, we can just say we're adding that to ten point five, ten point.
Ten point six, ten point seven, fees, ten point eight, site plan review. Okay, is that? Subsection four fifty, ten point nine, plans and maps. No changes for A, B, or C, or D. For the whole subsection, yeah. Okay, then we are subsection four fifty, ten point eleven. We are getting rid of A and B for the area dimensional and density requirements. And C, we are adding and parking canopy. Um, section one of C, two and three of C, no changes. Section D and no changes. E, one, no changes. E two, adding in parking canopy. Three of E for all other ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. The height will be limited to, we are changing it from twenty-five to twenty feet. Okay. Subsection four fifty, ten point twelve. Section A, we are adding and parking canopy. Section B, no changes. Subsection four fifty, ten point thirteen, just adding and parking canopy. Um, subsection four fifty, ten point fourteen. Doesn't look like any changes for the whole subsection, correct? Yeah, right? Okay, subsection four fifty, ten point fifteen, no changes. Section four fifty, ten point sixteen, no changes. Section ten point seventeen, no changes.
And that's it?
And that's it. You're wrong. Simple enough.
Read it. Now an opportunity for the public. If they have any comments they'd like to make. See, no one in the public, no one online, Jamie?
No.
Okay. We'll close the public input portion of this and any questions or questions from the council?
I just have, I may through the chair ask, um, Rob a question. Hi. Um, I'm sure you're aware that we're going to be, as a town, reviewing the entire zoning bylaw after the first of the year. Is there a reason why this is happening now?
So as an opportunity to bring this section into compliance, because there's already another section that was going through the public hearing process, um, which was the utility notification for small-scale, uh, freestanding structures. The planning board, I pitched this idea to them to update the rest of the bylaw where it need work. They seemed okay with it. That's why I moved forward with it. Even though there is that overhauling change to the bylaw coming up for twenty twenty-five, I, I don't see any harm in updating the language now because we can use this even if the bylaws update again after the fact. And one thing that's probably going to be added to this section anyways is battery storage, which don't currently happen in this bylaw, but you're starting to see that pretty much in every other locality throughout the state. So if anything, that's probably going to be the biggest change coming up in twenty twenty-five is the addition of battery storage.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Yep.
I think Rebecca has it ready.
Oh, Rebecca.
I just also want to add, sorry for talking to the restroom, but I just wanted to add that, uh, we had an applicant come forward trying to make sense of the bylaw in the spring. They wanted a, a, a medium-scale installation. They couldn't figure out which rules applied because there were conflicts in the way that it was written. And so this item is before you because of trying to sort through the bylaw because this applicant was having trouble moving forward.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for ground-mounted photovoltaic installation to December tenth, twenty twenty-four, at six fifteen PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. To the rest of the day, we have no licensing matters. Financial matters, we have a tax classification hearing to determine.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. The percentages of tax levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
Hi, guys.
Hello.
We're just having one reading. That's true. Martin Grudgeon, Chairman and Board of Assessor, with Diane Bishop, the Director of Assessing, our back here again to, uh, class, tax classification hearing. And, uh, just to start off with the general stuff, uh, values, five and a half percent. Uh, some will say that the values went up six or seven, but residential went up five and a half percent. And we base our values on MLS arms-length sales, whole family sales, no non-arms-length sales, no estate sales. So we did, we do use MLS sales. And our average values for, uh, the assessment went from three seventy-two, six ninety-one to three ninety-two, nine. So we went up about twenty thousand dollars. And we're seeing, beginning of the year, we still see rising and kind of softened, uh, last month or two. We look at, uh, the ASR assessment sales ratio, and we had many in the seventy percent last year and the year before. We're, and that was to eighties, now we're seeing nineties. So the market might have softened a little bit. And we had, we didn't have much new growth, but we have a couple subdivisions. So next year, plan on more new growth for twenty-four and twenty-five. We have three subdivisions being erected, you know. Hand it off to Diane.
Hello. So I also want to, um, acknowledge, we have two board members. We have Marilyn Gattini and Hayden Smith in the audience. And we also have our Assistant Assessor, Carrie Anne Wenzel, who put a lot of input into this presentation also. This year is probably one of the first years we do not have to have a newspaper legal notice publication because the Department of Revenue has started changing the way that we have to advertise. So my first thing I want everyone aware of is it has been advertised on our town website, and this presentation that we have right now is on our front of the town website, if anyone wants to look at it as we're, um, discussing this, or just to look at it a little bit later. So the purpose of this hearing is to, um, determine the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property for fiscal year twenty-five. And if we go on to the next screen, and I don't know if I, if Jamie caught up with me, but thankfully, Jamie knows how I'm not good at sharing my screens. That I always start to say that we have not set a tax rate. We believe the tax rate that's in this presentation is what will be approved. But once the Department of Revenue reviews all of our information, if they find anything, it could change a penny or two here or there. So this, um, meeting is not to determine what our tax rate will be approved at, but if the Town Council would like to have a factor of one or a split tax rate. Uh, and they do have two other options, and that would be if they would like to consider adopting a resident. A residential or a small commercial exemption. So I'm gonna skip right on to fiscal year twenty five tax rate calculation. And you will see that we always start off with the prior fiscal year as our basis to start our new one. And fiscal twenty four, our tax levy was fifty one million, three hundred seventy nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty seven dollars. And our tax rate was eighteen dollars and fifty four cents per thousand. Uh, by law, we're allowed to add two and a half percent to our um last year's tax levy. Lot of people remember that prop two and a half comes into effect, but they do not realize that prop two and a half. Is two and a half percent over last year's levy, it's not. Two and a half percent that their taxes can't be raised each and every year, so. Uh, that question comes up a lot and we also are able to add in new growth and our new growth came in at uh. Five hundred fifty one thousand, three hundred and fifty nine dollars. So outside of the levy limit, we are able to add any debt exclusions. And we still have our school modules that we are paying debt on, but this year, which is new. We are starting with some of our high school construction debt and our natatorium construction debt. So this year, our total debt exclusion that we can add to our levy is one million, twenty thousand. Eight hundred and twenty nine dollars. Uh, I do want people to be aware that our fiscal twenty five real and personal property approved assessment. Came in at two billion, eight forty six. Nine. Zero nine eight, seven hundred, sorry, those commas started tripping me up. So if we move on to the next screen and to the summary of tax rates. Lead the key part of when we get into this allocation of taxes. So you will see three columns or three major columns within subsections. And so you can see in the tax factor under residential. And the next one is C P I, which stands for commercial, industrial and personal property. If the town decided to have a a factor of one or one tax rate for all types of property. It is projected that our tax rate would be eighteen dollars and forty eight cents per thousand. Town council could vote to uh change this factor from a factor of one. As much as a factor of one point five. So if we were to shift the full tax burden. To the commercial, industrial and personal property. The residential property could possibly drop down to sixteen dollars and sixty seven cents. The commercial, industrial and personal property could go as high as twenty seven dollars and seventy two cents. So when we look at the average single family homes. Uh, we have, as Marty just mentioned, three hundred and ninety two thousand, nine hundred dollars with an average. Commercial industrial property at nine fifty nine, three. If we were to shift. To the tax, um, the tax burden to the commercial and industrial properties, it their tax bill could increase on that. Average assessed value, eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty four dollars. Where a single family tax bill could potentially go down seven hundred and eleven dollars. So I do bring this to everyone's attention, because. Do you also notice the residential properties are the largest class of property in our community? And our commercial, industrial and personal property are the smallest grouping. And so when we do shift the taxes, it really affects smaller um grouping. That they have a much bigger impact on taxes and the larger group and gets a much lesser decrease. Um, we were actually reviewing the total tax increase if our tax rate was eighteen dollars and forty eight cents. And for that average single family home of three hundred and ninety two thousand, nine hundred dollars. It looks to be an increase of three hundred and fifty three dollars per household for a fiscal year. And we did mention that the school debt and the natatorium is adding a additional amount. And we've calculated just that portion to be a hundred and thirty three dollars of that three hundred and fifty. Two, so we typically saw the average increase that we normally would see and then. Because of the school debt, um, we're seeing that additional, but I think that people were well aware as we went to vote. That we would be seeing some additional taxes based on um getting our new high school and natatorium. Uh, the next page is just a historical perspective uh from. Two thou- fiscal two thousand and nineteen, straight through to uh fiscal twenty five, you can see that. We've been pretty consistent in our residential properties in comparison to our. Commercial, industrial and personal property, uh, it's been anywhere between eighty two to eighty four percent for residential and sixteen to eighteen percent. For uh the C P I. The next screen will show us the neighboring towns. And uh I usually use the same communities because they are similar to ours. And we fall number three out of the six when it comes to our annual um single family. Tax bill. Uh, we are looking at Long Meadow being the highest and Ludlow being the lowest. But you can see that we kind of all right smack dab in the middle. That's basically the allocation of tax part, so I want to. Opportunity, if anyone has a question before I jump into the residential and small commercial exemption.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay.
So we're gonna move into the residential exemption and we have discussed this in past years that you do have the. Ability to adopt a residential exemption, it doesn't change the total amount of taxes that the residential. Group would pay, it just reallocates within that group. People will pay a higher tax rate if you have rental properties or higher end homes. If you have owner occupied and you have smaller, less value. You will see a reduction in tax. Uh, we could vote anywhere between five percent to thirty five percent. This type of um exemption is really used in municipalities that have high rental properties. And I do show that there are um. In fiscal twenty four, the communities that adopted it were all outside of the Boston area. And along the Cape, on the Cape and along the Cape area, because that's where people are getting rentals. Fees, and so they can afford their taxes more than an owner occupied um person. Um, and it is true that some properties would receive tax relief by adopting this, but the tax levy remains the same and it's. Only shifting the burden. Um, East Long Meadow taxpayers most likely would not see a benefit if this was adopted. And then jumping into. Still exemptions, again, this is another um adoption that the town council could um certainly do. Uh, the value has to be less than one million dollars for a commercial property. And that property has to be um solely occupied by a business or businesses. That have no more than ten people that the um division of unemployment could certify. Sadly, this list is really not always up to date, so there is a lot of room for. Um, errors and omissions, we have done our best to determine that there are approximately thirty six properties. Within our community out of the three hundred and ninety six that they qualify. Um, but due to having multi tenants and additional verification being needed, it's really hard to determine it. Again, all you're doing is you're shifting commercial value amongst. Commercial and industrial properties, so if you reduce the the value of twenty four properties. The remaining commercial and industrial properties will be picking up the additional tax burden. Um, it does not benefit the small business that has that, those ten people. It does benefit the owner of the business. And again, to show how many communities who have adopted this in the past, in fiscal twenty four, there are only. Fourteen communities out of three hundred and fifty one who have adopted it. And I'm not sure if that is um, if East Long Meadow really. Wants to be shifting their. Commercial and industrial taxes to save a couple of people and putting the burden to others. That's what I have, if I have any questions, I can answer.
Do any counselors have any questions? This is also an opportunity for members of the public, any comments or questions that they'd like to provide? Don't see anyone in the audience, is there anyone online? Okay, so there's no more public input portion, so. This time I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve that the town of East Long Meadow adopt for the fiscal year twenty twenty five. Tax rate, a factor of one, a single tax rate with no residential or small commercial exemptions.
Since been made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for attending and providing the presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm wondering if I could just take two more minutes of your time.
Sure.
So I know that I'm, I'm sure that everyone is aware that um Governor Healy. Uh, voted in the Heroes Act in. August and the Heroes Act was to help our um veterans. Exemptions to get an additional amount of a veteran exemption. Um, I have been in conversation with our veterans agent, Jason. And he is also looking to see that the town um. Look to increase our exemptions, so I'm not bringing this forward today, but the reason I'm bringing this forward. Is budgeting season is going to be coming up, this Heroes Act, if we voted in and it is a local option, will take place in fiscal twenty six. And I want it to be on the forefront of your mind that. If we do move in that direction, we are going to have to fund an additional amount in the overlay. Account, which is the account that funds all of our exemptions. Um, I have done a quick calculation that you could do anywhere between one percent to a hundred percent. And if we were to do a full percent, because we don't know where we're going to um, you know, balance out. That, and I do have the total, we would need approximately um. An additional hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars in our overlay. So it's something that I will be coming back before the town council to discuss, to see the direction they want to go. But I know that budgeting season is like starting immediately. And so as we're starting to put things into different buckets, this is something that we may seriously want to consider. Okay.
Great.
I have a question. Approximately how many veterans take advantage of the exemption?
So at the present, at the present time, we have um a hundred and thirty five veterans. Um, we, that would receive this type of an exemption, we also have um. What they call a clause twenty two D, which is a spouse of a veteran who. Has passed due to a service connected or a a disease or injury. And those are full exemptions, that's not included in this number, but if somebody's already getting one hundred percent exempted. There won't be any additional need to raise anymore, but it is for the veterans that are getting the clauses that. We have one that's four hundred, we have one that's a thousand, and that could go anywhere between five hundred, seven fifty. Eight hundred, uh, the thousand could go as high as two thousand, so I just want to make sure that whatever the town. May vote in the future, we're, we're able to fund it, because it is a local option. And as we all know, local options is funded by the town and not by the commonwealth.
Thank you.
So that um uh the overlay account, um, the hundred and twenty eight thousand goes into it, that's what. Um, we're projecting it wouldn't go above a hundred and twenty eight thousand.
That would be additional.
But it doesn't mean that we are definitely using all of that.
Oh, we.
Or do we use all of it?
We, we use that and more. Uh, so our overlay account that we budget is for exemptions, which is blind, senior and veterans. It is for our senior workoff program. And it is for any abatements that the town for real estate or personal property. And I know that we've been being very conservative due to the change in, I think it was the two thousand and sixteen. The modern, the municipal modernization act, they allowed us to now, instead of. Having one fiscal year's overlay and then the next one, we can combine it all into one bucket, so because we've had some excess. We haven't been raising as much, but eventually that excess is.
Gonna be depleted.
Right. So, but again, it was, it's just a please keep in mind, because I know. The veterans agent and um the board of assessors, we would like to be able to see if we can accommodate a little bit more of an exemption. Dollar amount and it will require additional budgeting. Thank you all for your time and uh thank you for your vote and we're gonna get our tax recap turned in tomorrow and hopefully will be approved shortly.
Thanks, Marty. Next, under financial matters, we have reallocating remaining funds. For F Y twenty four capital plan police cruisers. Uh, or nine thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars and seven cents. To the F Y twenty five capital plan control placement. Is that something you?
Chief, chief, you wanna complete your case? Lot of commotion there. Good evening. Uh, so this request uh is to bring last year's capital into this year's capital. Um, what I'm planning on doing with this money, if it's approved, is buying in a, a uh. An additional modem and tablet, not additional, a modem and tablet for the new cruiser that's being bought with this fiscal year. Um, that money would normally come out of the I T budget. So I'm just looking at this as a way, since it's still left over from last year and fits. It's the same type of project as going on this year, I figured I could save the I T department that money. And that, that would cover most of the, that would cover all of the purchase for. For the modem and the tablet would leave about a thousand dollars left over.
Is there any questions, Ralph?
I have questions, so I'm assuming when the cruiser um was allocated and you requested it. That the original tablet was just gonna be transferred from the cruiser to the new.
Yes.
Is there a problem with the tablet, is the tablet outdated, does I T not like it?
No, there's not a problem with it, um, what I'm wanting to do is, this would allow me to have a seventh marked cruiser, frontline cruiser. Um, right now we have six and we're finding that six available marked cars is just puts a real strain. On the use that we have, so if I can get an additional modem and tablet, uh, this will allow me to. Have a seventh cruiser fully outfitted uh for frontline use. Which I think will help with overall usage and when we experience long delays. long delays and repairs and bodywork and whatever else keeps a cruiser down.
So, so typically when a new cruiser comes in, one comes out, correct?
Typically, yeah.
And so is that what's going on with the marked cruisers right now? I mean, I'm I'm just wondering, otherwise, if you buy a new modem, you have one from this cruiser that's no longer being used. Now you have two. And we're just hoping that when we get the next cruiser that it's going to go in.
Yeah, well, it'll allow me to have basically a seventh setup available. So I can keep, rather than maybe putting another, transferring to another new car, I can keep hopefully a usable car that maybe has a little bit of useful life left in it available and fully equipped. Because typically when we push, when a new cruiser comes in and we push an old cruiser down to just be like a backup car, we strip the computers and that type of stuff out of it. So this would allow basically another car to be available.
Okay, and just a follow up. So typically, IT wants control over all the purchasing of all your computer stuff.
Yep.
I thought what we were doing under our plan was to put everything into IT so that it would come out of IT's budget, so we have better tracking of spending on the modems and all. Instead of basically taking from the police and moving, and then you really lose track of what you're spending it on. I mean, I'm not against the new modem or anything, but my thought would be that this money goes back to free cash. If IT doesn't have it in their budget for the modem, then we allocate from free cash to it through IT so that we still keep control of where it's coming from.
I I think the original purchase and the outfit is in the price of the capital, right? So the software and all that still runs through IT, but when the, when the cruiser is a purchase for capital, it's the cruiser plus the outfit that's all in that price. So the original purchase is with police or fire or DPW, and all the backend cost is with IT. You know what I'm saying? So the.
This is basically an extra unit because we have one that would normally be transferred over, and you're looking for an additional. So wouldn't that be through IT?
I mean, I guess, but it would be upfitting a vehicle because you're not down, you've already downfitted a vehicle, and now you're just upfitting again. Instead of transferring one of the cycle of the fleet, instead of transferring that out of the vehicle, you're buying another one.
Sort of like buying another computer, and it goes through IT.
I don't think the computer and the modem gets bought through IT when they outfit a vehicle.
I don't know.
I don't. It gets, it typically gets transferred from a different car. When we buy new, IT typically handles the purchase, but we did consult with IT to get the quote for the one, you know, what should we buy? Which model is the one you're recommending? So what we have quoted to spend on is the recommendation from IT.
So if you don't mind, through the chair, we have our guru in the audience. I mean.
I know whenever the police vehicles are purchased through the capital plan, the upfitting is included in that amount. I, I, I don't know why there's nine thousand left over from the prior year, but because, and I know like in previous years that everybody started increasing their quotes because it took so long to get vehicles, and then the vehicles came in, and then they were so expensive, they needed more money. But now the prices are coming back down, so they have a little bit of money left over from the previous years. So I think the thought was that he would use that extra money to outfit the fiscal twenty five purchase. But I, I don't, I guess I don't understand. I understand what you're asking. Whereas if if the plan was to just move it from a different vehicle, now you're using the extra money to buy an additional one, and I think he wants to take the opportunity to, rather than moving that one, leave it in the other cars that they can get as much use out of that car as possible, and then outfit the new one. I think that's what's.
Yes, thank you. And and we, and we, I'm foreseeing kind of a upcoming challenge here too. Not just that we're kind of fully staffed now and the cars are getting more use, but another challenge I see coming is that because of COVID delays and delivery delays on vehicles, we had two, basically two years of capital purchases. The vehicles all arrived within a very short timeframe. So unfortunately, what is normally kind of a natural cycle of typically one to two marked cars a year, and they kind of age. I won't say gracefully, but they age the way they age in a cycle. We, we right now have a glutton of like two thousand and twenty two Ford Explorers, and that they're gonna age together, and I can see a time coming when that that natural cycles. Yeah, so that's another reason why I kind of, I'm just kind of trying to get ahead of what I see as a challenge coming with that too. So just to make it clear, this is not an additional vehicle. We're not buying an extra vehicle that we don't have. We're allowing an existing vehicle to remain in service longer if if this is approved. That's, I just want to be clear to everybody.
So when you outfit a vehicle, it will include the modem, computer, everything? So if we approve, let's say, next year's capital, it's already in there that it's going to be getting a modem and a computer as part of the outfit?
I'd I'd have to look at the code again, but I believe it's part of the, it's, that's considered, that's quoted to be a transfer of existing equipment for next year for the capital that I just submitted, but I'd have to look at it again to see. So if there's no need for a new modem, we just transfer what we have? Yep. So this is just interrupting that transfer process and adding a new one to add a new vehicle to the fleet, essentially? And the leftover money, to explain why that's there, it's probably because because of price, rapid price changes with supply chain issues and stuff. We have been at, in capital requests in the last couple of years, I have been asking for a little bit extra to adjust. Or you always do that for unknown price changes, or you assume a piece of equipment's going to transfer, and all of a sudden they tell you, nope, this won't fit. Ford redesigned the vehicles, this won't, this this cage won't fit anymore. Now you have to buy a new cage. There's always, this push bumper won't fit. There's always little things like that that happens that you have to account for. So I think we've had a couple of good years where we didn't have to dip into that that excess, or at least last year, we didn't, that buffer covered us well. So I think that's where that, that money is from.
So needing another vehicle on the road. I know you requested and were approved for a pickup truck. The pickup truck was not supposed to be a continuous marked vehicle. You know, in daily use, it was basically an extra vehicle.
Right.
That one include an outfit with a modem and everything?
That that will not have a computer in it, no.
Even if it's put into the daily.
It's, I have no plans to put that in daily patrol use. That's, that'll be a.
Just, I'm thinking that you're basically having a difficult time right now with the extra employees and all it. I mean, a new truck coming just seems to make sense that they're going to want to drive that every day.
Well, that's not their choice.
I have a quick question.
Anna.
I obviously have no problem with, you know, the purchase and all that, but I have a quick question about, I'm a little confused. So at first, you guys said that the outfit is included in the price. Then you said most of the times the modems are transferred. So they usually not outfit with the modems?
The trans, go ahead. So if we say outfit, what we mean is that's basically putting everything, making a car a police car, lights, cage, radio, you know, all that stuff.
Yep.
So sometimes we have to buy new radios. That's another reason why I've added to capital requests the last couple of years to add, get new radios. Some years we don't need to, like this coming year, I believe, I think we're going to be able to transfer existing radios. So sometimes you're buying new equipment for that outfit. Sometimes you're just transferring a car that's going out of service. So. Usually the. Transfer still has a cost. There's a cost associated, yeah. How to move it. You're having an installer deal with it. So typically, we haven't had to. In fact, IT just, I think in this year's capital or last year's capital, they just bought us all new tablets and modems. So for the existing cars that we have, so, so in terms of that technology, that's actually, you know, we're, we're doing well in that. So so the the ones we have now should, should, yeah, they should all last another cruiser or two, I hope, be able to.
And those all went through the IT budget?
Yes.
Which was my point exactly.
So I think so.
The point.
It should go through IT is what I'm saying, which again, I think it's more of an accounting aspect rather than rolling capital over to capital. Whatever's left in capital, which has been normal, gets returned back to free cash. And then if we need something, we allocate the money for it. That was my, that was my whole thing in a nutshell.
So in, in, in.
Not that I'm against it.
No, I understand, I understand.
It's a process more.
It's just another, right? And 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 you're right, if that's the way we do it, and that's more comfortable, then let it roll to free cash and then move the money from IT. It still has to get re, the money has to get re-appropriated, so to speak. Because it's only, it was, right?
Over the last three or four fiscal years has had an excess that they've returned. I don't know if they'll have it again this year.
I think the only.
We've got a question. See your comment.
The department as a whole, not as general expenses, because it technically needed a transfer, but no, I don't understand what you're saying.
Well, and then we run into our other new thing, which is appropriating money immediately for non-budgeted items, which this would be. So we wouldn't wait to see if we don't need to appropriate money. We would want to put it in right away. And again, just from an accounting standpoint, we try to make it all happen at the same time. So either we roll it back and move it by vote, or we just vote to reappropriate it. It still has to move. And but I see your point because we did make a big deal last year during the budget process about IT, doing IT things.
Right.
So if that's the case, then this can roll back and we'll just have to do another vote for, right?
Through the chair. I guess that's a question, chief, in regards to your equipment. When you're going for a cruiser, and that entails it, it's a capital expense.
Yes.
It's a package deal for the most part.
Yes.
You start talking about tablets going to the school department. You're talking about individual tablets that cost a couple hundred bucks. They might be packed up together. You purchase a hundred computers at once. When you're dealing with a police cruiser, you're, you're dealing with a capital budget, and you're saying, hey, all in expense, cage, lights, computer, we need forty grand for a new cruiser.
I wish. It used to be, yes.
But but this is essentially, this came down, it's left over, you're being, I think, some foresight into what your department's needs are. You're putting an extra cruiser out there. Hopefully, you know, the new cruiser you're buying extends the life of some of those. I mean, I don't see a real big problem with it. No, but even in terms of the process, it's, it's, the cost was allocated for a capital expense, and he's asking to take capital dollars. And it's still, and again, your tablets and 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 twice, I would understand, what I would guess is they're specialized, they're expensive.
Yes, they are.
Not like you're buying a thousand dollar MacBook or.
It's about an eight thousand dollar tablet and the modem together. It's eight thousand dollars.
It's still pretty much a capital expense. Am I correct on that or?
Not quite. It doesn't quite reach the level that we're at twenty thousand or twenty five.
Yeah, but it's still, but it's, it is.
As part of, as part of the cruiser, like you said, the capital request wasn't just for a cruiser, it was for the outfit. So so it is part of the capital.
That's my point. It's all the capital request, which would be outside of IT to begin with.
And I think in fairness, I've seen it, having been on the capital committee for the last years, that we've actually done it all three ways. So it's not just been that we've put everything through IT. We have done it where if you're asking for a new vehicle and it wasn't exactly replacing one out of the fleet, that wouldn't come out of the IT budget when we funded it through capital. It would come out of just that total lump sum that we allocated for that capital project. So we haven't exactly moved everything to to IT, I think, like, I think we have and.
No, what I'm saying, I think that was the whole process, and that was.
It was a concerted effort to to do that.
That's why he purchased all new modems for the cruisers and all. We didn't say, hey, when you get a new cruiser, we'll replace that one, knowing that. Tried to do it on a three year, two vehicles, two and two, so.
So the modems though, that was a capital request from IT as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So I mean, I I see what you're getting at, and and most of our, most of our concentration was on that software light item, line item specifically, because the, the tangible things, the capital things weren't as nuanced as the software, and that's why we wanted Ryan to have his hands on all the software, not necessarily the capital expenditure, I suppose, is is sort of the difference there.
So if I may, from an accounting standpoint, Kim, does it make a difference to you?
It doesn't really to me. I mean, the money has been appropriated from free cash. It was for the purchase of a vehicle with outfit. He's asking to transfer the ninety four hundred to a vehicle this year to cover that additional modem. So I mean, I don't see an issue with it. If you return it back to free cash, then he's just going to have to go to Ryan and see if he can spend some of his money in his budget to to help him with it. So it's either way, the money's been appropriated. It's just determining what we're going to do with it, return it back or just use it to to do the fiscal twenty five purchase.
And tracking of costs and all as far as for modems, computers, hardware. I'm assuming IT keeps track of all of that. So that way there we have a general idea.
Hmm, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Or motion?
Make a motion to reallocate the remaining funds in account three, four, two, zero, zero, one for FY twenty four capital plan. Police cruisers in the amount of nine thousand four hundred and seven dollars and seven cents to account three, four, two, two, zero, seven for FY twenty five capital plan patrol vehicle replacement.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief. Thank you. I'll be hanging on.
Next up, we have a transfer of nineteen thousand one hundred eighty eight dollars from full-time salary wages to plant zoning and conservation, full-time salary wages to cover forty percent.
So the aforementioned salary moves and making those votes official immediately. This money was all appropriated, but at some point at the beginning of this year, we realized that after a retirement and before filling a slot, we realized that the the building department clerk, there was not a quote unquote enough work or traffic because of open gov coming online and all the permitting stuff being done online. So and we realized that planning had a lot more minutes and meetings and, right, planning has zoning board, CONCOM and and planning board. And so we separated the building clerk into forty percent planning, sixty percent building. So this is basically, this position was one hundred percent appropriated to the building department. And now we're just moving the salary forty percent to planning, and sixty percent will remain in building so that, so that the numbers work when we go look at the budget again, like, like our conversation from last year. So no new money, no new positions, just two departments paying for the same person.
Got it.
Right? And it's full-time position.
It is. Yep.
So when we get the budget, it shows one full-time position, but it's split between two.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, that's annoying. But we have the salary worksheets now that show everybody that's in every department, and so that's a little easier now. But yeah, you'll, it'll look like one point six people and one point four people. It's what it's going to look like, yeah.
Great. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the transfer of nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty eight dollars from account zero, one, two, four, one, one, five, one, one, zero, building full-time salary wages to account zero, one, one, seven, five, one, five, one, one, zero, planning, zoning, conservation, full-time salary wages to cover forty percent salary.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So next up, we can list it as a bunch of different agenda items, but financial matters, B four through the, or essentially all the same topic that we can. So up here. So at one of our, I guess the, the first. I guess the, the first step of the process was at our last meeting when we had finalized the. Taking of three eighty-two North Main Street, we had already previously had the funding of. Three point three million dollars to finish that acquisition. But. When it comes to actually. Doing the financing aspect of it, we had a few options as far as that. So we have remaining ARPA funds, which I think, as we all know, we had. Deadlines that we have to. Appropriate the funds and then the deadline to actually spend them. But of course, those two deadlines don't line up. So if we appropriated it, but didn't spend it, we're potentially leaving money on the table. And that doesn't seem like a good use to not spend every penny. And then that we got. We previously at a different meeting, um. We had the point-to-point van for the council on aging for forty-five thousand dollars that we. Released of ARPA funds. And so that's no longer allocated. We had that remainder thousand dollars and. Thousand forty-two dollars for the Ford range we allocated. And then we have other projects that we previously committed to with ARPA funds. Totalling seven hundred eighty-three thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents for ongoing projects. So the total. ARPA funds that we have remaining to, to spend before we lose them, eight hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. So I think the idea here was of the three point three million for three eighty-two North Main Street, we could. Relinquish the existing commitment for those projects that we previously committed to with the ARPA funds. Along with the amount that we already de-allocated to give us. The eight hundred thirty-six thousand or so. To take off of the three point three million. And then if we add an additional five hundred thousand dollars and forty-two cents from free cash, the total amount that we would actually have to finance would be. One million nine hundred sixty-three thousand, seven hundred ten dollars. So I think that's the brief explanation. If Tom or Kim want to.
Well, let me fumble it around first and then Kim can, can bring it home.
So correct everyone.
Yeah, right. Um, so the big thing is, is the ARPA piece here, obviously, um. You know, like for instance, we just moved the money into the MLP. Um, it seems weird that we're now moving it out. Uh, this whole ARPA piece, uh, has caused much angst. Uh, we have to have everything allocated by December. Uh, of this year and spent by December of twenty-six, which seems like plenty of time to spend. Except for after December of this year, we can't appropriate the money anymore, meaning if it's appropriated to something. And we don't spend it all, it's gone. We have a unique opportunity where we can just bundle all the rest of it. And throw it at one purchase, uh, one, one acquisition. This will, uh, release all that angst, thankfully, as well as reporting. There is a huge lift. Uh, reporting to the state, spending this money and sort of, um, so that, that'll be gone as well. Um, and we can say we spent every single penny of our ARPA money and we can be done with it right now. Um, and the second piece, um, the additional five hundred thousand of free cash. Uh, was sort of a happy medium between a, a whole host of things, the aforementioned, all the balls in the air and all the options, but. Um. We, we also have a huge, uh, project going on that you might've heard, uh, the high school. Uh, we're set to borrow a bunch more money for, for that to, to have enough, uh, cash flow. Uh, to, to pay the project as it's being constructed. Um, and. We want to keep our, uh, we've been advised to keep our, um. Our, uh, reserves greater than what they were at the end of last year. Um. Meaning it could hurt our bond rating if we were to dip below that. And obviously, uh, borrowing somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred million dollars is not something we want to mess around with. So. The, the, rather than, uh, there was some talk when we first saw the free cash number, which was, you guessed it, three point three. Which was exactly what was left on the building, uh, that we would just pay it off and not have a note and be done. Uh, but that would put us too close to that reserve number and eight months to go or seven months to go. With no use of free cash or any of our reserved. And just hoping the budget makes it, which, uh, would not be great. We, we typically use quite a bit of free cash to supplement the budget. Throughout the year. Um, so this is a happy medium of, uh, putting some of that. Money towards the purchase of the building to bring the purchase price down even more. Uh, rolling this one point nine million dollar note into the note for the high school, uh, at a ten-year. Which first payment, uh, of approximately two hundred and sixty thousand, uh, will get paid for by our tenants. Uh, with money left over to operate the building, obviously. Um, and so on and so forth, as, as the years go by and this bond, obviously that payment will decrease. Uh, our rent roll will naturally increase, even as we start to lose our tenants. Uh, we will never get to a point where the tenants, as the, as the leases exist now, the tenants will always pay for the note for this building. As we set up the account for that before. So that one point nine number puts that, uh, bond payment at a point where. We can use the revenue from the building to pay it and no more money needs to come out of the budget. Did I miss anything?
Uh, well, I mean, I guess the only thing.
Of course I did.
Uh, just the one benefit of even, even if we had rolled the three point three million into the bond. It's no longer taxable. There's a de minimis rule that allows us to borrow, put it in with the borrowing for the school. So that we pay less for that borrowing. So it's no longer considered taxable. It'll be tax exempt with the other bonds. That's the only thing.
The accounting.
Through the chair. Um, I understand from, uh, Connor, you made this graph graphic.
I did. Yeah, that was a sunrise version of the complicated one that.
I, I, I get the notion of releasing the funds for those, uh, identified capital projects. To do exactly what you just described. So how then are, we're not releasing the project, the notion of the project, we're just going to take free cash to fund those.
Correct. Got it. Replacing, sorry, I, I could have said that better. Replacing the ARPA projects money with.
Free cash. Okay.
So that those projects will still be completed, but the ARPA money will be gone.
It's just a funding source, you're speaking.
You're correct.
So rather than using free cash to reduce the borrowing on the building, we're using the free cash to fill in those ARPA projects and then allocate. The remaining ARPA to the building. So our last report can be in March and it'll be completely.
Mostly like the shell game of just the buckets around rough.
So through the chair, a couple of different questions. Um, one, I understand as far as paying down the building, um, we had a worksheet. Was done up as far as what we expected the cost to be and stuff like that. Can we just update that knowing that? This will be our bonding.
Yep.
And that way there, we can actually see the numbers.
Yep. Absolutely.
And then, um. Because we voted for a three point three million dollar to bond three point three million, do we need to, uh, revote? To reduce that? Or did we vote up to three point three? I can't remember.
They voted to authorize three point three and because we've actually banned for three point three. We shouldn't have to rescind anything when we go and just borrow the one point nine and bond that term.
I just wanted to make sure because another vote, that we made sure that we took care of it. Um. I had multiple questions. I had too many. I can't think, um. Bonding. Um. I guess the last one is more of a comment that we had our bonding, um, people in here when we were discussing the school. And at no time did they tell us that we were going to have to keep, um, our reserves higher than what we were. In order to get the rate.
So it wasn't.
Go through that at all and, and say, they looked at us and said, hey, you guys are in great shape. And now all of a sudden, we're expected to keep more in reserves, I think.
It's not that we're expected to keep more. The concern that we had is that if we had allocated the three point three out of free cash, which is what free cash went up. And then you allocated throughout the year, any money, our reserves would be going down. So it's not that they're, we just want to make sure that we keep our free cash at the number that it was last year, which was the seven point six million. So you're really just trying to get to a point, like clearly you always want to build your reserves. You want to build OPEB, you want to build stabilization. Um, there's interest in a capital stabilization fund. You're always trying to. You're always trying to build those reserves.
There's somewhere.
Um, so, sorry, but you, you just don't want to decrease your reserves. And when you're in those meetings, they ask you, do you plan on using your reserves in the next year? And when you say no. They anticipate that your free cash isn't then going to plummet because you've used money for something that wasn't anticipated.
I mean, isn't our free cash way above? I mean. What, what a normal community would have. I mean, there's a concern, and actually I've heard it from a few different people, that if we have that much in free cash, it means we're overtaxing our citizens.
Well, you could say that the money that's been sitting in free cash, you normally would have started putting that into a stabilization fund. So that you could increase the percentages in the stabilization fund, because we haven't reached those limits yet. So. Honestly, and I think there might be some discussion soon where we start talking about like. We might want to move some of the money out of free cash to increase those other reserves.
And that was sort of part of our, uh, initial sort of action items for this, which would have been like five more things. But, uh, after Connor and I talked before, when we were talking about the agenda. That's why number nine came in, which was the discussion of free cash, because it, there is a lot and, and I think it requires a pretty good discussion. Uh, from all of us on what we think is the best, where, where to put all this stuff. Like Kim said. Uh, you know, one of the, one of the things we talked about was the capital stabilization fund and do we put some more annual, uh, OPEB? And, uh, so I think our suggestion was to just take a bunch of this free cash and just put it in our other accounts and, uh. Go from there. And that, that's sort of, it's a good point. And the reason we're here, right? We, we know why we're here. We've been collecting. Two million dollars from insurance for the last four years at the end of the year. So I mean, that's eight right there, right? So. We, we like to think that we, we've tightened that up, right? With, with this year's budget, we, 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 we didn't put that number in there like it's always been there. So that's a great point. Taken another way is we're not going to have this type of, uh. Like in, like, uh, um, turn back into free cash. We, we, we are tightening up the budget. Which means this number is not going to jump by three point three every year, right? It's just not going to happen. Because more eyes are looking at the budget. We're, we're, our processes are getting better, our policies are better and we're, we're tightening up that number. So. Our bank account here is pretty close to what we're going to be looking, you know, we're not, hopefully not turning back three, five anymore and certainly hoping we're not. Missing the budget. So this number, we got to be smart with what we want to do because. There's not going to be, we're not going to, we're not going to get to bring this much money in from here on out.
So I, through the chair again, sorry, I do agree. Um, I guess my point is that. More than two years ago, we had the same discussion, hey, we've got, you know, six million dollars sitting here. What are we going to do with that? And a year went by and now we're at seven, six and have got seven, six. What are we doing with this? Now we're at ten. And we're having the same discussion again. And I guess that's, that's my main point is if we're going to move it to stabilization and all.
So.
Let's do it. I mean, three years is a long time to decide to move funds to free cash to stabilization. And again, it's nothing.
First.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, um.
No, that's again, that's why the discussion needs to pass.
You know, one month turns into six months, turns into a year, turns into three years and.
Right.
I can wrote, write those up for you whenever you might.
That's up to the president.
Yeah, no, so, uh, again, we, we, there, there was another allocation here because of, of. This money and our policies and the numbers and the benchmarks we want to hit in all these accounts. Do we want to create this capital account? How do we want to spend that? How do we want to fund it, uh, moving forward? Um, these are all questions that, you know, we have ideas, um, but we wanted to sort of. Round everybody into the conversation and, and what, what, what was everybody else's thoughts? Because we certainly have plenty of projects to do. Uh, we certainly could take whatever number, uh, uh, capital we're looking at again and add another million dollars of free cash onto it. I, I mean, we can, we can do that. We have projects ready to go. Um, and I think somewhere in the middle there with both of those suggestions is that capital stabilization fund. And free cash in the, in the capital plan, uh, as long as we're not taking out that, that. That appropriation for capital in the general budget, right? As long as we're enhancing with free cash and, and not decreasing what we're budgeting for capital.
And I do like this.
I think the other thing I would add is.
Use as much ARPA as we can. Any that they give us.
The other thing I would add is, um, of course, long-term, I don't think it's any of our intention to not put some of that free cash to use, but it's. I think it has been of us to not jeopardize the funding of the high school by doing a lot with it at the immediate moment, but have it. Having it just sit there has made us a lot of money with interest rates being high. So it's not like we're losing out in the interim. So. That has been a positive side effect of it.
Yep.
I, I mean, I guess that is the other thing. The money is sitting in the general fund. So any revenue that's earned off of that is going into the general fund. And I think we had said there was like nine hundred thousand, um, nine hundred thousand dollars in interest last year, which went into the general fund, which was part of free cash. So once you start moving that money out, the interest will stay wherever you put it. So if you move. You say you move two hundred and fifty thousand OPEB, you move two hundred and fifty thousand of stabilization, that money then sits in those funds, any money that's earned. And it's just going to increase those funds to try and get you to those percentages where you're trying to get to.
So for instance, that was our, sorry Kathy.
Oh, go ahead.
All right. No, so the, we had, I forgot what we, we had five hundred thousand. This was our first draft. We had five hundred thousand to start the capital. We had two fifty in stabilization and two fifty in OPEB. For another million, which left us a million in free cash to sort of. Get through FY twenty-five in case anything happened without going below our, our. Our fund balance, reserve balance from FY twenty-five. So. These are the, the ideas that we were talking about and, um. You know, there's obviously a, a ton of options and, and again, I'm not just saying it. I don't just keep saying it because it's one of my goals as town manager to create a capital stabilization, stabilization fund. I promise you that. If it's not a good idea, because we have a conversation, then let's not do it. We don't have to do the goals just because we're there. If that account makes sense, well, let's put some money into it and, and get it wrong.
So I guess my point would be that in the course of the explanation for this agenda item, we've naturally migrated to. Nine, which is discussion of free cash.
My bad.
No, no, it's kind of like a twofer here. I would recommend that, uh, all of the last 10 minutes of discussion is, is very necessary. Um, but I would. Recommend that instead of, uh. Further discussion tonight about how to, what, how to use prudently the, the amount of free cash we have. That for the next meeting or the December meeting, that. Kim and, and Tom, you know, create that, uh. Executive summary of where we could put things. So we have a picture to look at. Versus the seven of us going home and writing down, okay, I think they should buy this. We should put it there. No, I, I'm trying to, you know, be serious about it. Um. If you, you're paid and hired to look and see all those needs. Um, we're, uh, elected to react to it and be prudent about how we allocate it. So, um. I think we saved ourself item, agenda, item nine.
Perfect.
And unfortunately given you two a task.
Love it. Love it. Kim will have it done in the parking lot.
Yeah. Bite of already.
I just want to kind of mention something that is obvious, but I think I just going to mention it anyways. So originally, we were bonding 3.3, and now it's obviously the 1.9. And we've already taken, you guys have to refresh my memory.
Point four.
Out of free cash for this building. So I just want to make sure us as a council are okay with the extra not 1.3 being taken out, because I know we're taking the, we're using the ARPA funds, but then we have to replenish the ARPA funds, and we're taking out the extra 500. So I I don't want to go unnoticed, that to go unnoticed that we're actually taking out extra 1.3 in free cash. And just to make sure we're all on the same page with that. Sorry, guys, just.
So just to make sure I'm not misunderstanding this, 2.4 in free cash that we spoke about and voted to
Yep.
use for that purpose is not included in this 10 point something million. It was already.
Already gone.
I don't want to say escrowed, but you know, set aside for that. So, yeah, so theoretically, 2.4 and 1.9 is
3.3?
Three.
Six, four, one, nine. Four, three. Oh.
Well, no, it's not doing 1.9.
1.9 is what we're going.
Bonding.
Okay.
Going to bond. So what it'll be.
1.3.
Right.
It'll 700 in ARPA plus the 500, right?
So.
And I think it makes sense to actually spend the ARPA funds on something that we know.
Right.
Is going through.
100%, but then you have to backfill it with the free cash. So I just want to make sure we're all aware that we're spending additional free cash, and we're okay with it.
Just a quick clerical question. The, so the MLP, the police patrol vehicle, the Virchlin window replacement and the DPW, when, when would we need to backfill those approximately so that they're not like so far off schedule? Would this be something immediately?
That would be.
Yeah.
I would. There's a vote for that.
Yes, there's a vote for it tonight.
Just want to, okay, that's.
And we jammed all these agenda together on you.
We're moving, yeah. And then, of course, there is the potential. So we would vote on that tonight to essentially backfill them, but of course.
We'd be doing this all, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then in the future, when those projects are done, say, like the police patrol vehicle that happens, like similar ones that just happens that it doesn't spend the full amount, then we would end up returning that.
To for cash. Not lost to the ARPA fountain.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Um, why are we taking the additional 500,000 out of free cash?
So that was to get the bond number to the point that we can afford to pay the bond and run the building with the rental. So we won't have to pay for anything else, right?
Okay.
Through the chair.
Chair.
When I first got the agenda, one of my reactions to was this, was this was pretty meaty.
Yep.
And the only thing I'd really, I would just really like to see is more like a balance sheet of what are we actually? I I understand the concept of it at the the high level, but just how much interest are we saving, you know? Taxes in person, non-tax exempt, kind of like the the backstory and putting it all into context, because it's this is kind of, I mean, this wasn't on my radar. When I got the agenda, it's kind of just thrown at me and why I'm pretty supportive of it. I kind of just wondered what the the benefit to it was. And so we spilled a lot of that out here, but really just kind of like the numbers behind it and what it actually means to the town in terms of a cost savings measure.
So again, and without giving you exact numbers, obviously, the amount that we would save from, say, bonding 3.3 and 1.9 is nothing compared to bonding $100 million at a a lower bond rating because we spent all this free cash.
I get, I get that. I get that part, but just from the general, just what this says, like compared to the agenda, and those are some decent sized numbers.
Yep.
And just like outside the school, outside the high school, bond ratings, what that means for other projects, but just like what this means from the overall, just so I I'm, you know, kind of like what Kathy and you're doing, scribbling in the air, 1.9, 2.4, this carry the one here.
Okay.
You left with. It'd just be very helpful. So like, you know, even walking in the door here, kind of knowing what we're looking at a little more indepthly than kind of doing the calculation we're doing sitting here.
Okay, so, sorry. That that I guess suppose could be clear. The, with all these votes, free cash would be at 9.656. And the prior year balance was 7.6. So you're, we're, we got $2 million. Overlap here, without impacting, right? And 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 again, uh, obviously, an abundance of caution because the amount of money that we're trying to borrow, it was, you know, your bond rate could go down. There, there's no guarantee that they were going to be like, oh, you're a penny under, that's it, you know, slash them. Uh, but rather than even
Take a chance.
Take a chance at that. Right. I mean, this, this is, this is a large sum of money. So I I I see your point, Jim, and so a little more backup data in terms of.
It's a good story. I mean, it is a good story. Just, you know, hey, I just as a counselor, I want to know, hey, I'm saving that town a half a million dollars in interest payments. It's 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 good stuff. So, you know, we run into people outside of these meetings, we can, we can tell that story, just so we have, just so we're armed with the facts. That's what I guess I'm kind of getting on.
Okay.
So if you're, I'll share one last. You had said that if we bond this at the same time we do the school, it becomes tax exempt, which is usually at least a half a percent more if it's taxable, right?
Yeah.
We'll be saving at least a half a percent on the $2 million.
Yes.
By grouping up.
I can, we did have that. I know the spreadsheet you were talking about. That kind of showed what we expected the costs to be, what the borrowing would be. We did it at 1.8, which we're close to with 1.9. We did it at 3.3, what that would look like. We can update that and.
Yeah, I was just thinking along with the maintenance of the building and now that we have the leases and what
Yep.
payments are and stuff like that, just, just an updated version of it.
Yep. No, and that's, and we'll have, we can put that on there too, because that, that's all the numbers and it's sort of laid out, you know, 20-year note, 10-year note, this much, that much. And and so we can just adjust that to show those numbers, absolutely.
And I apologize, I was looking for it, but I'm not.
I brought it.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll enter in a motion.
I'll start with, what, B4. I make a motion to appropriate $500,042 from free cash to reduce the 3.3 million borrowing for the purchase of 382 North Main Street.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say nay. All right, the motion passes.
B5 motion. I make a motion to reallocate 53,042.25 from unallocated ARPA American Rescue Plan Act funds to reduce the 3.3 million borrowing for the purchase of 382 North Main Street.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Number six.
I make a motion to reallocate the remaining 783,247.33 in ARPA American Rescue Plan Act funds in the following project, projects to reduce the 3.3 million borrowing for the purchase of 32 North Main Street. 6030 dash 3420016, Town Manager Municipal Light and Power Project, 621,638.87. We have 3422007, Police Patrol Vehicle, 27,800. 3422009, Virchun Park Middle School Window Replacement, 53,891. 585515, DPW Allen Street Landfill, 79,917.46.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Or seven.
Make a motion appropriate 783,247.33 from free cash, replace the ARPA American Rescue Plan Act funding used to reduce a 3.3 million borrowing for the purchase of 382 North Main Street.
Second, questions made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Then we are on the transfer of $31,800 free cash to update the pavement management program data. Tom.
Hi. So this was just to expedite what in all likelihood would be a capital project and recommended at some for this year's budget, uh, which would put the scheduling and timeline out at least another few months to to get this vendor in. Uh, so I kind of wanted to fast track it. Knowing all that's going on with our pavement network in the next year or two or three, I wanted to sort of read the, the existing pavement management system's data is almost 10 years old now, which the underlying soil in in our town has changed three times in that 10 years. Water table and such. So I just thought it was a good time to update this data and and get this vendor in here faster than normal. Certainly not necessary, and we can talk about this in six months. As it, like, like I said, will undoubtedly be on the capital plan. But I kind of wanted to move this and and get this vendor moving so that we can possibly get this updated this winter and have all that new data for pavement season in the spring.
Echo those sentiments. I thought it was a good idea when you suggested it, given that one of our goals for the town manager this year was to come up with some sort of road improvement program and figure out how we could better improve the, the roads in town, but it's hard to do that with 2016 data not knowing where to allocate funds to best.
Through the chair, this data discussed like pavement thickness and what's the base material and what what the recommendation is to improve the road, or is it just, hey, this is the condition of the road? I mean, in that case, for 10 grand, I'll just tell you all the roads.
Come on. No, there is a full scientific process here, including pavement cores. And so that's all sort of listed in the in the material for the backup material for this, the the scope of work and such. Uh, but yeah, no, it's more than driving around saying, well, this one looks worse than it did in 2016.
This is going to help us when we decide going through the pavement process, whether or not we can just do a light grind in a a new coat on the top, or whether we have to do the whole base over.
Or reclaim, correct. Yes, no, that this is a full new set of data to to sort of push that plan forward, if you will, whatever that proposed plan is for, for the pavement.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to transfer $31,800 from free cash to account number 014212-5307 to update pavement management program data.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Want to discuss free cash?
Cash, but we will discuss it again at a few.
Yes.
And we are on financial matters, B10. So we have the acceptance, one stop for growth, MassWorks. Motion.
I, I make a motion to accept the Community One Stop For Growth MassWorks Infrastructure Program Grant in the amount of $1,975,000 per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? None. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. 11, the Acceptance of the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
I make a motion to accept the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the amount of $21,685 per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. For 12, we, the Acceptance of the Green Communities Designation Grant.
I make a motion to accept the Green Communities Designation Grant in the amount of $160,170 per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Further discussion? Didn't we already do this?
We couldn't, I couldn't find anything, so we're doing it again.
So I wasn't sure if we did it or if we had just talked about that's how much we were going to get and that we had to.
Just talk to.
We had, and I, it just in my mind, it sounds, because it's so familiar.
It was what we were qualified for, right? So we had
Right.
Rebecca and and DPW had to put a project in that qualified for that money before we got it. So I thought we had to. I went back through all the minutes. You drove out to summer with Bailey to get our plaque. I mean, I remember it vividly, but we never took a vote to accept the money because we didn't have a project in there.
So under our capital plan, didn't we have a list of projects? I'm pretty sure under capital, we had basically allocated money that we were getting from the green communities, because what was left over was roughly $5,000, which wasn't enough for an electric municipal or the police department. So I thi- I think.
Typically, when, when we do those votes for capital, they say contingent upon, if it's, if we're planning to get a grant.
That's what happened.
It's just contingent upon the grant funding. So it could have been there. But if we didn't get the grant.
Let's take the money. And that way that we can do the already approved. I'm good.
Further. Are we already?
Is there a second?
There was a second.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Minutes. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the October 8, 24, open session minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Interesting.
One abstention. Motion passes. We have no old business, so new business. We have proposed zoning bylaw amendments for accessory dwelling. Isn't slated as a first reading, but more as a starting the process. So I think in the, the scheme of the process, we know we have that February deadline to try to meet our best before it's out at the state level. So we have, we'll say, 80% draft of the bylaw for accessory dwelling units. Tonight, we received the copy and that could get sent to the planning board for their recommendations so that they can start the process, hold any public hearings as necessary. And then when it returns to the council, then we'll have our first reading, and then we can do our normal process beyond there. So we don't necess- unless anyone has any immediate comments or feedback on it, that we aren't necessarily taking action other than asking the planning board to now take action on it.
It's one we're going to have to do.
Yeah, right.
We're going to need a bylaw on it. So I would, I would like to make a motion to refer the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for accessory dwelling units, ADUs, to the planning board for recommendation to the town council.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? It's seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For that, for that ad in the paper tomorrow. No, probably there's.
Hey, the next new business item is authorizing the town manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement with the police department unit. Let's just provide a brief overview, Tom.
Yep, so it had been, I, geez, a couple meetings ago anyway, when I Yep, so, um, it had been, I, geez, a couple meetings ago anyway, when I mentioned that things went so good and, um, we had a, a couple of clarifications that we were making until we could figure out what the uh, you know, appropriation was going to, additional appropriation was going to be for this year, uh, retro, this kind of thing. So uh, all squared away. Um, we didn't, because of the way the agenda fell and payroll fell, we don't have the exact number for appropriation, which we will have next week, uh, but it will be between fifty and seventy thousand, somewhere seventy-five, eighty, okay. So which is like. Which is there between one point four and two point one percent of the police budget. The, that's already been allocated. Uh, so that would be tha, that increase. The reason that there is that disparity is uh, we're gonna have to try to, uh, figure out the overtime. Uh, and, and what that, we have, we're, we have the retro sort of figured out, and then we have to sort of push out uh, the new rate of overtime pay a, across the rest of these seven months. So it, it's gonna land in there somewhere. Um, but that, that was the outcome of our negotiation, somewhere in there for an additional appropriation. Yeah, okay, go.
An additional appropriation on top of what we had already calculated within the budget.
So. Yes.
Contract, we had basically put a percentage in there.
Yep.
The only calculation that we included for police was a COLA, which was equal to whatever um, the other units had. So it didn't.
Yeah. Twenty-five was across the board this year.
Okay.
But it, it wouldn't have included any other changes to.
So there won't be any change to the salary line items, because we've already accounted for that. It'll be the other benefits that we negotiated in the contract. Uh, the rest of the salary lineups, Quinn, longevity, uh,
overtime.
Overtime. I forgot what else is, there's a, there's, there's, there's more than most departments.
And somewhere up to eighty-one thousand.
I, I gave you the highest number.
Yeah.
He might have given the low, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty to seventy-five.
I didn't have a chance to read the.
Well, I guess, I guess, point being, uh, there may not be any need to make all that appropriation to overtime. If we're just estimating what it's gonna be, or do we want to just, whoops? I guess that number was right. We can backfill the overtime in May. We don't, we don't necessarily have to put the money in now for something that may not happen.
Right.
Isn't it, we're, the, the, the identified cost is fifty-one.
Yes.
The low number, and the high number is the likely cost.
I'm always gonna give you the.
I appreciate that out of you.
Safer.
So through the chair, but there is, there's funding in there and also chances are, as we come towards May, that's when it'll be like, hey, we're gonna run short because of this.
Of course.
And.
Of course, there's already been an appropriation for overtime in the budget.
Yep.
How much more we're gonna need is, is anybody's guess.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And this was more just for awareness, if we proved, um, finalizing that contract, that there may be some future financial slight implication.
Right, which is the, the point of the whole thing, right? Um, it's not a contract over three years, so but it's because of the implication of the, the, the mon, the money.
But all contracts are contingent upon the appropriation for funding.
Correct.
So, so if we don't appropriate funding, there's really no contract. We've had that once before.
Well, even when they go well, we never seem to start early enough to have these done by July one. So that we don't have to retro. It's just how it goes.
Yeah, but we're not two years behind.
No, yeah. Correct.
Was there a motion made yet?
No, I think that was just giving the overview of.
Make a motion authorize the town manager to collect a bargaining agreement with the police department union.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have.
Thank you, Kim.
Proposed bylaw amendment for a bylaw review committee.
You want to be on the bylaw review committee?
All right, uh, so as you know, when I put in our council calendar at the beginning of the fiscal year, um, it's hard to believe, but that time is already almost upon us, that for Article Nine, Section Three of the charter, we have to conduct a periodic review of the bylaws in all general bylaws of the town. And so that process has to kick off sometime in twenty twenty-five, but before July first or June first, one of those two summer dates of July. Ideally, given the comprehensiveness of how many bylaws there are and how much time it's going to take, I'd like to get it started as soon as we could in, in January. Um, but the charter also requires that we form a bylaw for this committee to kind of govern how it operates, similar to the charter review committee that we previously established a bylaw for, uh, chapter one seventy-seven. So that leads to this bylaw, which I modeled just directly after chapter one seventy-seven, and certainly I it's, it will be future discussion, but this at least starts the process for us.
So is this a bylaw? Just the general, or is it for all our bylaws, which would be general and zoning bylaws?
So.
I think it, I think it says for our bylaws, correct?
So the charter says general bylaws, but as I interpret it, since our zoning bylaws are part of the general bylaws, it will encompass everything.
Oh, God, and you're only giving us a year.
I think as we did the charter one before, if we start in January, and we can change, we can put whatever date we want in this bylaw, but we had said for the charter that it has to be by March fifteenth of the following year, but if we need longer, we could make the bylaw longer.
So I guess. Um, do a, do a bylaw amendment halfway through.
In February.
Yeah.
So, uh, I guess since I created it, I'll read this one. Uh, chapter one seventy-eight bylaw review of seventy-seven dash one, authority to establish a special bylaw review committee as mandated. And section three of the town charter shall be periodically established as provided below. Section one seventy-seven dash two, when established, report. The town council shall establish the committee in each year ending in five and no later than July one of that year. The committee must submit a written report to the town council on it before March fifteenth. Section one seventy-seven dash three, powers and duties. The committee's charges as described in Article Nine, Section Three of the Charter. Section one seventy-seven dash four, membership. The committee shall be comprised of up to seven registered voters of the town with the following restrictions. A, no more than two members can be current town councilors. B, members can be former charter commission members. C, no more than two members can be employees of the town. D, at least two members shall be persons who are not current town councilors or town employees, nor former charter commission members. Section one seventy-seven dash five, appointment of term, members' term. The town council president will appoint committee members under the authority described in Article Two, Section Three of the Charter. Each appointment shall expire as of the end of the calendar year in which the committee's report is submitted. Okay, it's our first reading. Um, is there any questions, comment, further discussion?
Super granular, but I'm just looking at that last sentence. Each appointment shall expire as of the end of the calendar year in which the committee's report is submitted. Instead of the end of the calendar year, would we want to maybe just tie it to when the report is submitted? Because there wouldn't be anything happening after the submission of the report to the end of the calendar year.
There may be.
So there could theoretically, so we're opening that just as a possibility that after the report is submitted, we may need to come back and as, as a bylaw committee.
We might not necessarily do it, but it could be possible that the council at that time decides.
Yeah.
You gave us this report, but could you look into something else, or what about this?
Okay.
Further action items.
All right, no, it's good. Yeah, I've, I've seen in the past with other ones, um, they usually tie the term date to the submission report for like these special committees that, you know, pop up every so often, so, but that's, that makes sense.
So we could tie it to the fiscal year instead of the calendar year.
We could.
There, and, um, June thirty. Cause the reports due on March fifteenth, March fifteenth, April, May, June, I mean, ninety days after. Just a thought.
Yeah. Is there a motion? Unless there's any other discussion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to refer the pro, proposed bylaw amendment for a bylaw review committee per Article Nine, Section Three of the Charter to the town council bylaw review committee for recommendation to the town council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, and I did schedule with, um, Genies, we do have that slated as a uh, second reading for our December tenth meeting, so that should give us about a month hopefully to have that reviewed and we end up needing more time, we can continue it, but at least we'll have it. I'm opposed to not run out of time. Okay, action items, uh, two that I wrote down from this meeting as we were discussing was the updated version of the North Main Street, uh, financing spreadsheet.
Yep, some really cool stuff for Jim.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything you want.
And then a continued discussion on free cash, which next meeting's agenda looks like. Anyone have any other action items I'm missing?
And I think it was the last meeting or curious content with, or with regards, nope.
Okay, oh, put that on there, please, sorry. I apologize.
It's okay. I'm expect to kick the bucket anytime soon. We're good for a while, okay?
Hand down the road as I.
That'll be, I will, I will bring that up.
My next meeting is November twenty-sixth.
Yes, the Tuesday. Hey, there are action items. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, I believe. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And passes, and we are adjourned eight twenty-two. Thank you.